Okay, it is six fifteen, so that ends our public hearing on the safety plan. And now, pledge of allegiance, I think we're around two.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store.
Okay, calling the meeting order. We need a roll call.
Troy Anderson.
Present.
Padraig Lee.
Present.
Dwayne Bebo.
Present.
John Fairchild.
Present.
Christopher Gadway.
Here.
Patty LaFle.
Here.
Ed Marin.
Here.
Richard Sears.
Here.
David Taylor.
Here.
Okay. Uh, resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the agenda. Can I have a motion?
No motion.
Motion Patty.
Second.
David. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, uh, the Board of Education is going to enter executive session to discuss matters leading to an appointment of, to a particular position. Need a motion? Motion Dwayne.
Second.
Second was?
Padraig.
Padraig. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're going to leave for a few minutes to have an executive session. We shall return fairly quickly, I think. Ask the Board for a resolution to return to its regular session. And the time is six forty. Can I have a motion?
Motion break.
Sears motion, second.
Dwayne.
Dwayne. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're back in regular session.
And I move to amend the current agenda to include the employment agreement of our interim superintendent.
Okay, motion by Patrick.
Second.
Second. David. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now, uh, recommend Board, resolved that the Board of Education approved the appointment of Mark Besen to act as interim superintendent of schools for the Beattmentown Central School District at the per diem rate of eight hundred dollars per workday on a day-to-day basis as determined by the Board of Education with commencement date of August ninth, two thousand twenty-three, and to authorize the Board President to sign the contract of employment between the district and Mark Besen. Can I have a motion?
Motion Dwayne.
Motion Dwayne, second.
Second, Padraig.
Padraig, second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Welcome to the Beattmentown Central School District, Mr. Besen.
Thank you, sir.
We're looking forward to have you here. And I want to thank all those members of the Teachers Association and the administrative team that helped us with the interviews. I think the process went very well, and we're very pleased with where we are. Now, let's get to the regular meeting. We're resolved that the acting superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following minutes. I'm ahead of it? Presentist? Oh, presentation's time. Okay, oh, sorry, Gary. So, a presentation on the yearbook from Mr. Lambert, who's our Director of Twenty-First Century Learning.
So, this was a project that I took on about twenty-five years ago, and I will admit there are some projects that you start with great intentions that don't, don't ever make it off the ground, but because I'm a persistent individual, I found another way to make this happen. So, how many of us are Beattmentown brads here? Just to quick show, quite a few. We all know, um, the crest is the name of the yearbook and has been the name of the yearbook since nineteen fifty-nine. Actually, this is a scan from the cover of the nineteen fifty-nine yearbook, and we have had, um, yearbooks from nineteen fifty-nine until two thousand twenty-three, but unless you were foresighted enough to purchase that yearbook in the year that you graduated, you don't have those memories to take with you. And as the current acting chairperson of the district's Hall of Fame Committee, I can tell you, finding information on graduates, alumni, et cetera, is a challenge when you don't, you're not able to take those yearbooks out of the library to go come over them to find photos, find information about our graduates, athletes, coaches, contributors. So, what, what I'm going to show you today, so I had, I had the lightbulb idea that came up, came on in my head, the project that I've wanted to get done twenty-five years ago with one of our computer lab assistants of hand-scanning every single yearbook, which was a disaster, um, I found a company that specializes in scanning of yearbooks for districts, and the result of that project for us, which cost the district less than three thousand dollars for all of those yearbooks from nineteen fifty-nine, we didn't do it in two thousand twenty-three, and Renee Hall and I were talking just a while ago, we're, we're not going to ever scan the current year's yearbook because we don't want to cut into sales of, uh, from the yearbook club. We will wait two years before we ever post a yearbook, so that that gives people motivation to buy the yearbook, but also makes things recent enough that they can see them. So, would you like to see what the end result looks like?
Yeah.
All right, let's take a look. So, the crest from nineteen fifty-nine. We have a bookcase of sixty-two-ish yearbooks, and those are the covers of every single one of them. We are missing three, I'm going to send this out as a parent's, where I wanted the Board to be the first ones to hear about this, as well as anybody that's attending this board meeting. The community will find out about this in an update, probably in the next few days, but we're missing three yearbooks, nineteen sixty, nineteen seventy-seven, nineteen eighty-two. Check your attics and basements and see if you got one of those, and I will send those off to yearbook scanning. But I just wanted to show you what we can do with this now that you couldn't do with this before, and this is going to be available on our district's website for anyone in the community, or anyone outside the community to take a look. So, I'm just gonna, because it was the inaugural yearbook, I'm gonna click on the nineteen fifty-nine crest, and I should be doing this from the computer because this remote is a little bit tough to do from there. So, let's take a quick look. And here is the nineteen fifty-nine crest. Now, no big deal until you start turning the pages. It wants to do it, there we go. So, as you click, as you click ahead or back, it flips the pages just like you were looking at the actual yearbook. And every single page is there, and what's even better about this, we have a board, a former board member, former coach, former, um, just extraordinary employee named Elton Jodwin, that if you know him, you know he's a legend. Within each yearbook, you can search by typing a search term of whatever you're looking for, and you can take a look on page fifty-eight. There's Elton Jodwin coaching the boys varsity basketball team. So, to do that now, for those people that want to nominate someone for the Beattmentown Hall of Fame, you have, you have to sit in the physical library, you have to comb through pages, you've got to look things up and press your Republican, wherever you can, you can do this from the comfort of your own home now and find way more information. I actually found out this afternoon when I was looking through these, um, Beattmentown Boys Hockey, guess what year was our first season? Anybody else? I did say.
Seventy.
Nineteen seventy-six. Seventy, nineteen seventy-six. Just cool things like that, finding out about staff members, teachers, reconnecting, finding your old yearbook. It's not the most impactful thing you're ever gonna hear out of these board presentations, but it's probably the first time, maybe not probably, it is the first time that we've ever had this available for the district or our community, and I wanted you to hear about it first. So, that is, that is it, that's all I have. It's short, but if you have any questions, I'll be.
You've just burned five hours of one of my days now.
Okay, well, yeah, because once you start looking through, you just keep looking and looking and what else. So, I know, I, I sat down for about an hour of nineteen fifty-nine, and I, and I was like, where the hell did that hour go? Facebook, I don't spend as much time as I did on that.
Super interesting.
Anyway.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert, one question, is that on our website now?
It is not only because I wanted you to be the first person to see it and not leak it to the community, but I will be putting it up and putting an announcement out to the community so that it's available to everybody.
Perfect, thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, now, what else did I skip over? I skipped over public comment. If anyone in the audience would like to make a public comment. Being none, um, reports. Acting Superintendent Polly Cavan.
Okay, a couple of things, um, we had, as we discussed, we had the Department of Homeland Security come and do an audit in the end of July, so as soon as we get that report, it'll be shared with the Safety Committee, and then it can be reported out at, at Board Meeting. And we've also taken part in a threat assessment training at CDES, which we'll also share out at Safety Committee meetings. And also want to update people on our, um, we've talked about additional behavioral supports this coming school year, so just kind of give you a status of where those are at. We have hired an additional counselor in the high school, that's been staff now. We have an additional school psychologist that will be working district-wide. BHSN has staffed the two additional crisis interventionist positions, so we'll have four total, one in each building, and an additional, uh, BHSN counselor as well, so hopefully we won't have a waitlist for our students needing the mental health counseling. We also have, um, ongoing training, of course, we adopted a new SEL curriculum, that messaging has gone out to staff, so for pre-K through eighth grade, Character Strong has been adopted, and, um, for the high school, Seven Mindsets is the name of the program, so they'll be training on those programs the first two superintendents' conference days at the end of August. We also will be having additional aid training, and we are finishing up an inclusive schooling training this week, tomorrow's the last day of a three-day conference. So, all of those things have been put in place for the coming year. We've also, as many of you know, started collecting additional data this year on, um, various aspects of social emotional learning and mental health. As you know, we've talked about here, um, there is a crisis in schools everywhere right now with student mental health concerns and behavioral concerns. So, we have, um, worked, we've worked with, um, Committee of Nine to kind of firm up our plan on how we enter things into School Tool for any kind of, um, physical altercations, and that, that went out to staff, so we're collecting that information. We also have a process in place for if somebody, a staff member is injured, they could report to the nurse and we collect that data. We also started a mental health data sheet district-wide, each building is responsible for completing the data points on that sheet, and then it's filtered into one district-wide sheet. And that collects things such as, um, the number of hospital transports, the number of times a mobile crisis unit is called, um, the number of times we make referrals for preventive services, Champlain Valley Family Center referrals, uh, classroom evacuations, hold-in-place, and physical interventions. So, those, those things, and I'll share some of that data, and then there'll be some data I'll share in executive session later on, um, but looking at, for instance, district-wide, we had this past school year, forty-five, um, transports to the hospital for evaluation for mental health, and we had eighteen visits from the mobile crisis unit to evaluate mental health concerns. We did, there were thirty-three hold-in-place district-wide, and that could be any number of reasons, whether a student was in crisis, a staff member, or a medical issue, there could be a variety of reasons for that. There were also, um, two hundred and eight classroom evacuations district-wide, and again, that's, um, documented at the building level as far as how many minutes. The, uh, majority of those are at Beattmentown Elementary, where we had both of our eight-one-one classrooms. And then, as far as physical interventions, we had fourteen district-wide. When we look at the number of incidents of students involved in physical altercations, now that we have kind of defined, right, and it could be from a push, a shove, a kick, to a fight between students. So, looking at that, the number of students district-wide that were involved in a physical altercation was six point five percent, so fairly low number of our population. And then, when you look at the number of students that were actually involved in two or more incidents, it's down to forty-three. So, the majority of incidents were one-time for a student, and that, and there was no other further incident reported. And then, as you go up, um, of course, we start looking at child line, which is where we have to look at if a student has ongoing behavioral issues, whether they need to be evaluated for special education, and so often, students with multiple incidents may be students who are classified, um, with an emotional disability, and that may be contributing to their behavior. So, I guess, having said that, um, there are courses, everyone knows here, everyone works really hard with our students and helping and co-regulating with them and doing the best they can to do behavior plans and interventions to help support them, making referrals for them to support them. We have a really good team, and we just need to keep working together to do the best we can, because we will continue to have students with emotional disabilities and struggling, and we'll keep working on always trying to improve and making additional services if we need to.
This is baseline year? This is the first time we've collected this data in this format?
In this format, yes.
Do we have data from other years? And, and, and again, I'm, I'm well aware that two things have been put in place, you know, I, I completely understand we're not going to have aggregate data from years past, but do we have data from previous years showing individual types of classrooms and the number of incidents they have, whether it be eight-one-one, twelve-one-one, integrated classrooms?
So, we do, like, so I have, um, I went back, so this past school year and the year before, the data's difficult to compare just because of, like I said, of how we were reporting, but we did break it down to students with, um, disabilities and without, and we look at, you know, like I said, with BES, um, there were some areas where there was more, like classroom evacuations. We didn't have that data the previous year, this, the mental health data sheet was new this year, so we don't have that going back. But we, when we look at the physical altercations coming out of School Tool, um, there's just a variety of things that I think people weren't consistent, I think we firm that up with how we're reporting it now, and I think we'll reiterate that at the beginning of the year, so we're reporting consistently how we report that, because, um, for instance, uh, just looking at, like, Cumberland Head did not have, um, there was only the principal prior to this school year of elementary, they had shared help before, so that impacts too how things were being recorded and who was working on it. And now that we have a specific procedure in place, I think that'll be better going forward.
So, one rises to the level of a reportable offense. All those push-ups, is what you're talking about?
Yes, so it's, um, when we talked about it, we looked at, and we have a definition identifying, we need to, but, um, we talked about how people have different tolerance levels, right, but that we felt it's important that people, if there's physical aggression, it's documented. So, there may be a staff member that, um, you know, if they get pushed or kicked, they don't, they just dismiss it and don't think it's a big deal, but we were, we had included in our direction that that should still be documented.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Polly, but out of that conversation, one of the, we, we talked about a couple of different things, so there are, there are some incidents that are, like, state mandated to be reported, right? So, there's, there's a certain criteria of things for something, like, to be reported to the state. And some of these different tools that we were talking about are to capture all of those things that don't necessarily rise to the level of being state.
Which is what we want to know.
Yep.
And how many, do we know how many instances, or specifically in the, uh, year department basically?
So, I have that data to share in executive session, just because it's kind of sensitive as far as being identified, we will identify people in programs.
Numbers are numbers, though. Okay.
Yeah, so, the other, because it was brought up last time, I, I think, Mr. Gavitt, you brought up, like, the, because we were talking about the school safety report that goes to State Head, like, what you were saying, so that stuff is much higher level, and so it doesn't show the day-to-day stuff that goes on in the school. So, that's why we're trying to collect it this way.
I heard you say percentage on student and student, what, did I miss a percentage on student on staff or faculty? Was that in that, did you bring that up?
No, I did not bring that up. I do have, um, data on staff, I was going to share with you later on, but I can share so, and this is, so again, this was partway through the year, the, the nursing data, when we looked at that, there were no staff incidents reported at the middle or high school. There were twenty-five incidents reported by staff at Cumberland Head, and there was a, a total of six students of, for those twenty-five incidents. Five of them were pre-K, or K, and then, um, one older student. And then, at BES, there were twenty-four incidents reported with a total of nine students, and that was a variety from first to fifth grade.
So, when you go back to middle school and high school, when you say reported to the nurse, does that mean you reported to the high school office that it didn't go down to the nurse?
So, if staff were injured in any way, they were, um, asked to report it to the nurse or directed to the nurse, and that was.
Let me rephrase that, I'm not looking for injuries, I'm looking for, like, a student, not every staff, I, I don't think is going to report to the nurse if they got kicked because they're not going to go down, say, my, I'm injured, I just want to know, do we have numbers on?
So, that's, yeah, that's.
I hate to say salt, because that's kind of a strong word right now, but that's kind of what I.
So, that is included in the School Tool data I shared, so like, the physical altercation could be with student or staff.
Okay, and I'm, I'm sorry to beat a dead horse here, so it was twenty-five incidents at Cumberland Head in the elementary school, uh, obviously in the elementary school, twenty-four incidents reported by the nurse in her tracking system, um, for BES. When we take into consideration all the reports in School Tool as well, what does that number jump to?
There, it doesn't, um, so I cross-referenced them the best I could.
Okay.
The way we could pull it, and so it appears like.
So, so all the incidents that are reported in School Tool are also reported to the nurse?
Not, well, not necessarily, I guess, which I can, what you're asking, so I guess if they were injured, they went to the nurse and reported it. There may be, if they were, a staff member was pushed or didn't feel they were injured, they may reported it in School Tool.
Yeah, that's.
So, I have, so I know that, um, the numbers on the nursing spreadsheet are accounted for in School Tool, but I don't necessarily know if, like, all the numbers in School Tool are.
Understood, so we haven't, so we haven't pulled, we haven't pulled all the numbers from the reports in School Tool yet to have that?
We don't have the breakdown on students on staff, only the ones who reported here, correct?
So, correct.
Okay.
So.
Is there a chance of getting those numbers from School Tools?
I do have. Based on what we, we could, um, with the principals polled for me for this information, so, for instance, middle and high school, again, was zero towards adult, as far as physical. And then, um, BES was forty-two.
Okay, understood.
And then, Cumberland Head was twenty-five. So, the same number.
Okay, understood, so I, so I guess the, I, the root of my question was, do we know how many of those reported to the nurse were reported in School Tool? So, there's going to be some crossover, we just don't know how much at this point.
There is some crossover.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Who is, who, who reports this? Explain to me how this works, because I don't exactly know. So, a teacher, you know, has an issue with a student, is that teacher responsible for reporting that on, like, the School Tool or whatever, or do they report it to their building principal, then the building principal?
No, they report it in School Tool. For the staff.
Yeah, I, I will say, in the Committee of Nine meetings, there was, I mean, there was fairly extensive back and forth between, you know, board members, the administration, the BTA members that took place in the Committee of Nine, and that, that system seems to have been polished in a way that, you know, worked for, for all necessary departments, I mean, say that's accurate?
Yes, I think, I think we'll re-agree at the beginning of the year and make sure everybody's, you know, kind of reminded of the policy or what we're doing, so that we're all doing consistent.
So, so, like, teachers, they're free to do this, they don't have to do it?
No, they go ahead and put it in.
It's all, and they don't.
Just one question on, on the School Tool reporting, just because since we're getting it all out there, when comments are put into School Tool, are those, are those comments locked in place by the people that report them, or, you know, like a Google Doc, if it gets changed, are those changes tracked?
Everything in School Tool is, is tracked, so you can go back and see anytime anything's changed.
Understood. Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, next, Mrs. Parliament.
Got all the bits of grace for you tonight, so, number one, I'm sure you're looking at this going reopening plan discussion, you're probably going, why in the world are we going to be discussing the reopening plan? I know I talked about, last month, we were having our COVID monies audit, our grants audit, um, one of the criterias is we have to discuss the reopening plan. Even though the reopening plan is not gone and done, because we are still receiving the federal monies that pertain to the reopening of schools for COVID, this was something that we had to put on our agenda to discuss. If anybody has anything they'd like to discuss about the reopening plan, you're more than welcome, but I, I heard, heard the audit had to bring it up.
And are, are we continuing to follow, follow federal, state, and local health department criteria?
There is normal, there are normal guidelines, so it, it.
So, right now, everything's?
Right.
Back to normal?
Right, so it is kind of strange that we have to discuss this, but per the audit, I had to put it on the agenda.
So, the answer is yes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The non-existent guidelines.
Right. So, um.
Thank you, Jen.
That, that was good, right?
That's, that's a brief report, Jen, anything else?
Yes.
Okay, keep going.
Um, so you're also going to see on the agenda the tax rate. I want to explain that, because I know a lot of you guys are new on this board, and it's a little confusing because there's two different tax rates. So, what happened is Town Foxburg is not at one hundred percent equalization, we're only at eighty-five percent, which means we get to have an ex, we, we, we have to pay more because the county is saying we are not assessed at the, the level we should be at. So, the people that live in the Town Foxburg, their tax rate's going to be higher because county's saying we should be assessed higher, and we worked, so therefore, we're going to pay more in our tax rate. This happened three years ago, we were at ninety percent. I was told by the county that this is going to happen again next year, and it'll be around sixty-five to seventy percent, because there, he is not going to assess again. So, it, it, it's, it, it's a game, you either get, your assessment goes up, or they, the county does this and says you're not assessed high enough, so therefore, we're going to make you not one hundred percent equalized, and you're going to have to pay it anyway. you not one hundred percent equalized, and you're gonna have to pay it anyway. That's pretty much what it comes down to.
So the proportional amount of the total for each individual is, is the same when you multiply those two factors together?
Right. So, so Plats, the Plattsburgh, as you can see, I had to take the assessed value of eight-hundred-and-seventy-three million dollars, multiply that by eighty-five percent to get it to what they feel would be the appropriate assessed value at one-point-zero-billion. So they feel that that is where we, people in the Town of Plattsburgh should be assessed, and that's what you have to be taxed on. So us lucky people, including me, that live in Town Plattsburgh, get to pay our tax rate. So if you get questions on that, it's very confusing, I know, and next year's gonna be even worse if it really does, if, if they don't go out and assess again, then the, the equalization rate they set will be around sixty-five, seventy percent. So just so you're aware, that, that's what we're looking at. Um, of those that live in Altona, Beaman Town in Shaysie, fourteen dollars and sixteen cents a thousand is phenomenal. So low, so it's been in a very, 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 very long time. You guys are one hundred percent equalized, that's great. That means the, the county's saying you're assessed at what you should be assessed at. So that is where we go. Uh, any questions on that? I, I mean, we really don't have, the county tells us whether they feel we're assessed at the correct value or not, we really, I, we don't have anything to say to say, hey, hang on here. So we're kind of at the mercy of the county. Um, the tax warrants that you guys will have to sign for this as well, um, are not ready because the STAR exemptions are not finalized through the county. She told me by next week I should have those, then I can compute the tax warrants for myself and the Town of Plattsburgh tax collector, and I'll need you guys to come in and sign them unfortunately, because she didn't have the STAR exemptions ready. There's not, I, I can't calculate the warrants without them. So I'm stuck. So I apologize for that, cause you have to come in. I, I need at least five out of the nine of you to come in and sign. So, um, I'll have Chelsea let you know when I have them ready, and if you guys don't mind stopping in whenever. That, we did complete our audit last week, everything went very well. We're glad it's over, no findings. Um, Mike Bro, Broers from, Bro, Broers, well, he will, you guys all know Mike, most of you know Mike. He'll be in, in October, he normally comes in when the audit is complete. He'll go over with the audit committee first, and then come, if you guys would like him to, he'll present at the board level too, whatever you guys want him to do. Um, he's very good. It was, it, like I said, it was a good week. He was in and out, he was very good. Cafeteria, we have a few updates that you guys should know about. Um, summer, just to give you a heads up, summer school, we, in the month of July, we served three-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-seven breakfasts and four, four-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-one lunches in the month of July. New York State Education Department showed up on our doorsteps two weeks ago to do an unannounced audit with cafeteria, completed, it's completed every three years, uh, reviewed production records and reimbursable meal counts, and there were no findings. She did, everything was, was good. Clinton County Health Department also came a week prior to that. And there were no findings there either. Our thirty percent farm to school, we submitted all of our documentation, we were really hopeful we were gonna be the first school in Clinton County to, to reach the goal, we did not reach our goal. So the problem, we're gonna try it again next year, um, the problem is a lot of our food coming in, even if, if it is from New York State, they're not stamping it New York State certified, it's gotta be stamped New York State certified, or else we can't count. So we're gonna work on that next year to make sure that if it is New York State stuff, that they're, they're actually stamping it New York State certified, so we can count it towards our figures.
So none of the schools in Clinton County reached thirty percent?
Nope, we would've been, we were hoping we were gonna be the first one, but we missed the mark. So we're gonna do it again, now that we know where, where we can improve, like getting these, the stamped certified New York and all, and, and everything else, we're gonna see if we can meet that thirty percent farm to school and get that additional revenue coming in. So we're gonna keep working. Um, the snack application went in and we've been approved, so we'll have snack again next year. That's all done. CEP, we've been approved for that, so now we're approved through twenty-twenty-seven, so the free breakfast and lunch will continue for at least twenty-twenty-seven. And this year, this is new, this is, uh, uh, in previous years, reimbursements were only based on your district's approved percentage, which was for us about seventy percent we get, at the free rate, and the other thirty percent was at a paid meal rate. This year, for any school that isn't CEP, all meals, one hundred percent of your meals will be at the CEP rate, which is, which is a much higher rate, um, which is really good news. So one hundred percent. So I think that's buildings and grounds, um, very busy, they're, the gym floor's gonna be done next week, they're working on the stage as well, they're working on the stage floor, that was in need of repair. They're all over the place doing other projects, or over at Cumberland Head, and they, a lot of painting, the doors, the safety doors going in, the middle school are all going in, they've all been framed. I think next week, the actual doors are coming in, um, and then NCC Systems will be putting in all of the hardware and stuff. So that's all going on, a lot of projects going on, um, with the buildings and grounds. Uh, I don't know if you also saw in the agenda, Transportation Jim Chauvin is going to be retiring. Those are some big shoes to fill. He is, he is a very, very valuable, valuable employee. Um, he's got a lot on his plate right now, um, so he's decided to retire, which everybody's pretty sad about. He's a very valuable employee, he does his job well, and he does it with a smile on his face, and he has those bus drivers, you know, it's like a well-oil machine down there. Um, and Missy, our head bus driver, Missy Seymour, also left a few months ago in May, and we're gonna be looking for a, we, we haven't found a head bus driver, we had no applications. So we're looking for a typist, we're actually interviewing tomorrow and Thursday for a typist to put down there. So we'll be having a very, very new staff down there, and, um, I might be spending a lot of time down the bus route. So we're hoping to find a new transportation supervisor. I will be training with Jim and the new typist to be trained on the routing program. That way, if we don't have somebody, we'll have coverage. So the bus drivers are, are all very sad, but they're a good group of people, we'll work together and we'll figure it out, and, uh, but it is, it's a big loss, but he'll be greatly missed. I think that's about it. Any questions?
On the transportation supervisor, is that a competitive position?
And I'd like to do, my hope is, we can do some overlap if we can get somebody in soon enough to do some training with Jim, so that way, um, cause he's so knowledgeable. And he also said he would probably stay on into our nineteen-A testing and all of that, cause he's certified to do that, and there's not a lot of people around to do that, so he would be willing to contract that out as a, you know, come up with some kind of rate, that he would continue to do that for us, so.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Big loss. Big loss.
Okay. Moving on. Resolved that the acting superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following minutes. A motion?
Motion, Rick.
Rick, second?
I'll vote for Patty.
Patty. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Is that still with?
Second still.
Okay, that's nine, nothing, okay. Okay. Resolved that the acting superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the CSE, CPSE, and five-oh-four recommendations dated eight-eight-twenty-three. A motion?
A motion.
I got Chris on that one, second?
Second, Greg.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolved that the acting superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, resignations, termination, appointments, testing, accommodations, scoring, and proctoring in retirement, be and are hereby approved. Have a motion. Chris? Second? Dwayne? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, MOA for ELT, business manager, MOA for ELT, district treasurer, and side letter of understanding with BTA, spelling bee coordinator, be and are hereby approved. Motion?
A motion.
That's David, second?
Second.
No, Mr. Bebo beat you to it. I saw that. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on the consent, consent agenda, confirm tax rules and authorize tax levy, surplus equipment and materials, transfers and grants, be and are hereby approved. Motion?
I'll vote for it.
Patty? Second?
I'll say.
Chris? Any discussion?
Where's the surplus equipment? Okay, just later.
Surplus equipment is, um, actually, my plan is, it's all sitting in that building right behind us, right there. Um, I'm gonna call Steve Brody, and Steve Brody is, will come up with a contract, and he's going to auction it all off, and we will put whatever money is in, to our miscellaneous right now.
So you still do auctions, do you guys?
Yep. So Mr. Brody's, and it's all, he comes one day, and it's all gone. He, it's, it's a one-day thing.
Right.
We don't have to worry about it, we don't have to touch it again.
Right, so you just don't dumpsterize it, you do auction.
Yes, yep. Yep, Mr. Brody's gonna come, and I, I'm hoping to do that before school starts.
Excellent.
Any other discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote?
Troy Anderson?
Aye.
Padraig Bean?
Aye.
Dwayne Bebo?
Aye.
John Fairchild?
Aye.
Christopher Gadway?
Aye.
Patty LeFlem?
Aye.
Ed Marin? Richard Sears?
Aye.
David Trudeau?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, whereas the Board of Education, the Beaman Town Central School District, the Board has considered the impacts to the environment of the following scope of work to be completed, that's the Beaman Town Central School District interior door reconstruction of the main building. Oh, my. Whereas the Board has reviewed the scope of work present and has further consulted with its architects, BCA architects and engineers, with respect to potential for environmental impacts resulting from the proposed action, and whereas the Board has reviewed the proposed action with respect to type-two criteria set forth in six-NY-CRR, Part six-one-seven-point-five-C, it concluded the project involves the maintenance and repair of existing facilities involving no substantial changes to an existing structure and/or replacement, rehabilitation and reconstruction of structures in kind, and/or expansion of an existing school facility by less than ten-thousand square feet. Whereas the school board is, school district is required to act as lead agency for the environmental review and the school district construction projects under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEQRA, and now therefore it is to be resolved by the Beaman Town Central School District as follows. One, the proposed action does not exceed thresholds established under six-NY-CRR, Part one, six-one-seven of the State Environmental Quality Review Act. The Board hereby determines that the proposed action is a type-two action in accordance with SEQA regulations. No further review of the proposed, proposed action is required under SEQA, this resolution shall be effective immediately. Motion?
I'll motion it.
Okay, Chris.
That you grabbed the whole question.
Thank you. Second? Second, is that Dwayne?
Yes.
Any discussion? Don't ask me to reread it. Okay, roll call vote again.
Troy Anderson?
Aye.
Padraig Bean?
Aye.
Dwayne Bebo?
Aye.
John Fairchild?
Aye.
Christopher Gadway?
Aye.
Patty LeFlem?
Aye.
Ed Marin? Richard Sears?
Aye.
David Trudeau?
Yes.
Motion carries. Additional items to discuss, board retreat.
Typically, you guys just discuss like dates and stuff, but if you wanna wait for it?
I think we should.
To come back, we can do it in September.
I, I think we should leave that till one ends here in person. Sounds like a great idea.
John, can I add something to additional items?
Yes, you may.
So on September eighth, we have a JV varsity football game here at Beaman Town against Peru. Really doesn't matter who we're playing, but it is gonna be a military appreciation night that we've been putting together with our athletic director, a couple of parents, the Booster Club, and we're trying to make this an annual thing, and we're trying to make it as big as possible. Where, up until yesterday, the flyover got shot down because I missed my ninety-day window, but, um, we are doing basket raffles. In the next day or two, you're gonna see a school tool and parent square, an order form, so if you have a vet in your life, we're having signs made up, so when you walk in, hopefully there's a hundred signs lined up of veterans that are serving, served in the past or serving now. We're having fifty-fifty raffles, we're gonna do food donation, so we're gonna take donations at the door. The Army's gonna be here with the National Guard obstacle course, tank simulators, we're gonna have a color guard here, and every penny raised is going towards the North Country Veterans Association that's on the Bradford Row. And we would like to, and the first, was it just a hundred students? Am I right about that?
First hundred students.
First hundred students that come, or they're getting a free t-shirts, kind of like a whiteout. We have free t-shirts for the first hundred students in line sitting. There's been some special jerseys that have been ordered through some things, some donations and other things from the school that we're gonna wear that night. We're trying to make it really big, so if you can get the word out, I'm wanting a public forum, so hopefully people go back and read their minutes and stuff, but bigger the better. And it's just not Be, Beaman Town veterans, I've reached out to Peru people, I want, if they know someone, they want a sign made up, we'll have their signs put up. I don't, we just, any, any penny raised, we're donating, so we want it big.
Thank you.
I've got one additional item.
Okay.
While back, um, Eric Bell came from CEBES to discuss the, uh, the food program that, that they have, talk about, um, you know, obviously we talked about nutrition, things like that. I'm wondering if we have done any looking into what the, like, financial impact of that program could have on the school? And is that something that we think as a board, it would be worth at least investigating?
I know Jen looked into it.
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's an additional co-serv to buy, so that it would be more money.
Yep.
To really do what we have employees here doing now, so we would probably have to, if, go that direction, probably let some employees go, or keep them on and pay both these employees as well, uh, which you could do, you could pay both, I guess.
Well, I guess, I guess based on the presentation at least, I.
You didn't find any savings with, right?
I didn't find any savings, no.
They actually serve less than the options we give.
Right. They didn't have as many offerings.
You said no savings, so you didn't find it to be profitable? Cause that, cause that's kind of what we heard from the presentations, right? Is that this actually became far more profitable?
Um, I, I would suppose if we cut down our offerings, it probably would be, but I don't, I mean, that's the direction we want to go, is to stop offering our students what we offer now.
You're saying that the, the range of offerings?
Right, uh, you know.
Like they offered one hot meal, and then they had any?
And then they had egg salad, sandwiches, and peanut butter and jelly, and a salad bar.
We offered two hot meals plus a sandwich option and?
And salad. And then we also have our soup and our yogurt parfaits. So we have a lot of different options.
Yeah. Do you have a remember the cost difference off the top of your head?
Well, we just looked at, for instance, pizza was one of the big things that they said we could, they thought we could save some money on. I, we went and looked to see, because they said they saved about ninety thousand dollars in pizza. We didn't even spend ninety thousand dollars on the pizza that we made. So there was no savings there for us, obviously. If we didn't spend what they saved, um, I, I, I didn't, I didn't see any cost savings with the pizza. So we just, we just looked at a couple of things that they pointed out.
Sure.
Um, I, I didn't take a deep dive and see everything that they've spent their money on.
True.
We get a lot of USDA commodities here, more so than maybe they do. I don't, again, I, I have to get all their data. And that, that's free food that comes from the federal government. So we have over a hundred thousand dollars of free food that comes from the federal government, which is huge. But with food costs going up, it, 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 it's expensive to run a cafeteria, no matter what program you're using. It's, food costs are very expensive right now. Even when you go to the grocery store for your family, you can tell the cost has changed drastically. Um, so for a school this size, it's, it's.
Because it seemed to me like there was too many benefits, like the, or potentially too many benefits. One was the fact that it could be more profitable and then there's, there's obviously the nutrition side of it. You know, the nutritional value is, it's of a higher nutritional value with these meals. Do we have, is there any comparison data or is that?
They have to follow the same regulations we do.
Sure.
Um, there is a, and I can share this with the board, um, regulations we have to meet as far as our nutritional values. We, we have ma, minimums and maximums and I can share that out with you. They have to follow the same, same thing. So, um, I can gladly share them with you.
From a base point though, right?
From, yeah. Yep. So you have to have a minimum amount of grains. You have to have a minimum amount of fruits. You have to have a minimum amount of vegetables.
Is there a maximum value?
Um, do they have maximums? No, just minimums per day.
So I guess that's, that's one I'm wondering. I mean, yes, we have minimum nutritional requirements, but I don't know if there's any data to, to look at because the claims of the program are, I mean, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but the claims of the program are that these are healthier meals. I didn't know if we had anything to, to confirm.
I can mirror the menus too as well. So you can see a lot of the options are very, very similar. I don't, um, I know Roxy's looking at changing a, a lot of her menu too, um, so that people will know what is homemade.
Yeah.
Um, so she'll have a better idea of which, which things are homemade and which aren't.
Like the ones wasn't, I was pre, pre-aided myself when I was here that night of the presentation, so memory serves. I believe it was the second, third order effect of higher nutritional value unless sugar equals behavioral change, higher grades, et cetera. I mean, was, is that the selling point, right?
But they have to. No, yeah, no, you're absolutely right. Um, but the minimum grains, if you saw the minimum grains on here, which is carbs and starches.
Sugar.
It's sugar.
Yeah.
And you have to meet these minimums. They're very high.
You have to meet the minimums. Now where we are as far as maximum levels.
Well, we're not, we're not, it would be silly for us to go way above that because it would just keep costing us more money. Okay? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it, it makes sense. I'm just wondering if we can quantify it. That's, I, I understand the theory that if we go above that, it costs money.
Right. So if it says you need to have seven grains of grains, if I give you twenty-five grains, well, that just costs me three times as much as if I had just given you the minimum. So like one piece of bread, well, I'm going to give you three. I, there would be no point in us doing the three pieces of bread versus the one if we hit our minimum.
Let me jump in. The juice worth the squeeze.
Right.
They're very stringent on the numbers too. Like they have to account for every meal. We got a lot of families in this area that don't have a lot of money. It might be the only hot meal those kids get. So we kind of.
And where are the kids going to eat? What are the kids going to eat? That's another thing, you know?
Because one of our, one of our menu items, the other second hot meal in a high school is a kid's choice.
Okay.
So that's one of her selling points in the cafeteria is the kids get to pick a meal. If it's something, you know, filet mignon is probably not going to happen, but if, if it's within reason, they, they, the second hot meal is a kid's choice.
Okay.
And I think, no, I thought, I found it to be an interesting presentation, I'll be sure, is that, um, I think they're the holders of the data. This isn't, we don't, we would never harness any data that because of this nutritional value, therefore this is the intangible effect, if I'm articulating that well. Whereas I believe that their presentation was, look at the following places where we've done this and then the grades are better. I don't know if anyone else was here that remembers that.
That was their selling point.
Yeah, that was the bottom line with it, which I'm keenly interested in that. I love a slice of pizza. Don't get me wrong. But at the same time, I'd be, I, I, and forgive me if Mr. Bean's driving that, is I'm willing to spend money if it means that kids are better energized, better focused. I mean, I'd be an advocate of it anyway. Better behavior in the classroom where teachers spend less time managing, more time teaching, if in fact that is an issue. I, I don't know. But my point is, I, I'm a fan of harnessing that data somehow.
I would love to know how they harness that.
Sure, no, I agree.
I just don't know how to do that.
Yeah, to show that the food was a direct effect. Because, because like I said, their menus are very similar to ours, very similar. Um, and they do have to follow the same regulations we do.
Right.
Um, so they can't, you know.
They don't give quite the options.
No, that would be the case, yeah. And they have to pay employee change. Again, memory serves was, you have eleven, I think? Pulling us out of the air.
Oh, how many, how many?
Eleven employees in the, in the cooking stat or the, in that stat.
Yeah, there's more than that.
They come in and they replace ten and they have to cut one away, something like that.
Yeah, but it, it, what they do is what we have Roxy here to do. She does what their job is.
That's what it was, yeah, yeah. And I'm off, I'm off target.
No, no, that's okay. I'll answer, I'll answer anything I can.
And I would have to add in that the data and the changes they presented were, were probably accurate, but they also occurred during the COVID years. And I think anything in that, there are all sorts of other things that were going on. They may have changed things.
I don't think you're going to present something where the data is not in your benefit if you show up and stay in front of the, this classroom and have a presentation, of course it's going to benefit them, make them look good.
Well, I don't want to take that comment to the long, right? Well, I'm telling you that the data could very well be good, but, but, you know, like you said, you guys, it sounds like you guys will look at this very comprehensively.
We have looked, yes, very much into this because if, you know me, if I could save a penny, I'm going to save a penny. And, and if it were to help kids, I'd gladly help kids. And we did, I, I compared actual menus.
Yep.
And, and we definitely offered a lot more. I, I shared the menus with the guys as well. And nutritional value, again, we have to follow, there's no option. You've got to follow these or else we lose our reimbursement. Um, and they, they would be in the same boat if they get same federal reimbursements, which they do. They have to follow these regulations. The production records have to follow suit with what you serve.
Yes.
And I know, like, we just had the audit, so our, we, we passed.
True.
Um, so we're following the rules that we're supposed to be following, which is always good.
Yep.
So, and again, she's, she's looking at her menus. She's seen what she can do more homemade stuff with, get more fruits and vegetable. You know, she, she's, she's looking at all aspects of it to try and make things healthier. So, yeah, hopefully I'll make sure the menus, you guys get, well, as parents, the ones that are parents here get copies of menus. Are all online, but.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would, I would, one of my biggest concerns is losing employees that we have.
I agree.
Yeah.
And, you know, I don't know the longevity or, you know, how long these people have been here. But, you know, I do see some validity to, you know, what they call better nutrition.
Potential.
We have to follow certain guidelines, just like they have to follow. So if our menus are really close and we're working on some good as normal made now and all that. I know my grandkids love me here, but anyhow, I, boy, telling somebody that's been here so many years, see you later.
Is, is that confirmed that we would lose headcount in the cafeteria if we were to?
You wouldn't have to. You could keep everybody.
Yep.
I don't know what everybody would do.
Sure.
Do you know what I'm saying? It's, it's tough when you bring somebody in to do the same job somebody's doing right now. That can cause a little bit of tension. Um.
I, from what I recall in the meeting though, they have discretion with current employees, correct?
Yeah, that's what they stated.
Yeah.
They take control.
And we, and if you went that route, we wouldn't need as many cooks because they don't make as much stuff. So we have to probably reduce our, there'd be reduction. And, and yes, you lose control of it.
Thank you all. Okay, uh, second public comments. Anyone in the audience would like to? Come down in front, please.
Ashley Kohler, third grade teacher at Cumberland Town Elementary School. Just had a quick question going off of what you were just talking about. Are, are bad snacks factored into the nutritional values that our students are expected and mandated to eat each day, the minimum?
No, just breakfast and lunch.
As you were saying, the sugar is definitely, um, on my mind, the amount of juice that we allow our students, that we physically are giving them is a bit concerning. Just want to bring that to your attention.
Through the BASH program?
Yes, and for breakfast as well.
That's the snack program that I, we just got approved for?
Yep.
Anyone else?
Well, are there, okay, following up on that, are, are we mandated, like, um, is the snacks included into what our maximums or minimums are?
Just breakfast and lunch.
Just breakfast and lunch.
Are included in, right.
And do we determine what snacks the kids get?
Yes, the, the cafeteria determines what the snacks. You have to stay, again, within an allotment. Um, I can, I don't have a criteria on the snack program as far as what, if, if there is a nutritional fat. I'm sure there is. It's got to be whole grain. It's got to be, um, I don't know about the sugar, but I can find out. I could always ask if we could do a water instead of a juice.
Looks like a lot of people would do that.
I can't, that's, that's an easy question. I can have that one.
Well, and, and I think that goes to speak to the, I mean, obviously, again, that we have, we have minimum values that we have to hit. But it's just making sure we look at maximum value as, you know, as well, like, or, or the highest number we're getting for some of these things specifically, sugar, I think.
May I ask what our juice is? What kind of juice is it?
What kind of, uh, Mott's?
Mott's. It was this year with Mott's.
Something like Capri Sun makes a lot of water, like no sugar, water. But I'm sure the price is more.
And I don't think we can use that one. It's got to be one hundred percent.
Got you.
I think it's got to be one hundred percent. I, I believe water, I think you can use water. I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you. Sure.
So I'm Scott Keter, president of Beattman Town Teachers Association, a sixth grade teacher. Uh, my observation in listening is everybody's right. Like, we have requirements we must meet. Mr. Guy, when you point out, this is some of our population, this is the best they eat all day throughout the school day. We don't, we want to keep our employees, everybody's right. Where Ashley hit the nail on the head is the amount of sugar we provide our students is, is too much. It, it's way too much. Um, we, everybody works hard to meet minimum requirements and I know that's the case. We sugar kids up hard. That's when I was here for Eric Bell's presentation. Didn't he say they tracked a student who had over two hundred grams of sugar in the school by nine o'clock in the morning or by lunchtime? It was something crazy. The American Heart Association recommends no more than twenty-five additional grams of sugar to that. So, uh, I, I would agree with Ashley. I think the sugar content is something that we really need to examine.
I would actually think this is a topic that makes great sense for our Health and Safety Committee to explore in the future. That's where it should come from. Anybody else? Okay, uh, we do have to have another executive session, so. Resolve the Board of Education enter executive session for the purpose of discussing matters potentially leading to the discipline or suspension of particular persons. Okay, court protem first. Oh, sorry. You're going to fire me for this sooner or later.
I've all had it.
Resolve, okay, we need a court protem.
You're so good.
Okay, so I need a second to Chris's.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now let me get this resolution. The Board of Education enter executive session for the purpose of discussing matters potentially leading to the discipline or suspension of particular persons. Motion? Chris, motion, second?
I'll say.
I got Rick for the second. Discussion, all those in favor? Boy, you guys are in a hurry. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries and I do not expect any action when we return.
Since you said there's no, not going to be any action, you think, okay, thank you.
Thank you all for being here tonight.